This is a regular meeting, this is a special meeting of the city planning. When you petition for special land use or site plan approval request in which you are interested in is called, please come forward to the podium. Give your name and address to the secretary for the record. After the appellate presentation, others may comment. The meeting is videotaped. It is very important that any one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. Affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions made by the commissioners are then forwarded to city council. Are there any questions?
No.
The secretary, please call the rule.
Commissioner Bland.
Present.
Commissioner Zorco.
Here.
Commissioner Faust.
Here.
Commissioner Clock.
Here.
Commissioner Lamar.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Milne. You have a quorum.
Oystash.
Cash.
Oystash.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
And me.
Commissioner Oystash.
Here.
A little bigger quorum.
And Floyd.
I said Clock.
She got me in.
She was gonna say Nash.
Yeah, I did.
Yep, she did.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
And he running to me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, everybody has on front of you the minutes for the December 20, 20th meeting, 2022. Do we have any additions or corrections? Okay, do I have the motion to approve?
So move more.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody has the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move more.
Second, Oystash.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business, election of officers. It's interesting, huh?
Currently, we had our chair and vice chair resign, so we only have the secretary, which is Jack Nash. So, to entertain any nominations.
But, and also, we have to look at, Mr. Oystash cannot be it, Brenda cannot be it because of city, and Brenda cannot be it.
Already knew.
I know, I'm just, for the audience, see the audience.
Okay. So, we only have four y'all, five.
Who's missing today?
Well, maybe we can vote him in, in absentee.
Did he express any interest?
Nobody.
I did not approach him.
Does this have to be made at this time?
We could postpone.
Yes.
If you would like to make a motion for that.
Is that, can we do that?
Yeah. You would need a motion.
Do we have a motion to postpone?
So move more.
Second.
Bland.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Onto the public hearing, number J230173, site plan review, special use permit for residential apartments at 2737 Davenport.
A representative for the project is not here, not sure why, but, in essence, you approved the phase one of this plan initially. There's an existing building on Davenport at 2737, it's an eight-unit apartment building, or will be. They have abandoned that idea and in favor of also going through phase two, which is an addition of to 13 more units behind the existing building, bringing the total to 21. So, nothing unusual, we're going back and forth with engineering in terms of just site details with utility connections and that sort of thing. There is sufficient parking proposed, as well as we've required that they put in some landscaping and screening in the parking lot. And, there is going to potentially be, well, there will be a detention pond in the front, and this all, because Davenport is a state trunk line, and it is required to have MDOT approval as well, so they are in the process of getting that for the project. So, the approval could be contingent upon, as stated in the report, engineering approval.
We're actually, we're in a public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
So, we're not at a point for questions. We need to go through the public hearing process and then motion on the table.
There's nobody here.
Nobody.
Then, then you need to conclude.
Close.
Well, he needs to call for comment a couple more times anyway.
Yep.
Okay, do we have any, any comment on J230173? Do we have any comment on zero, I mean, J230173? Do we have any comment on J230173? Hearing none?
Move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion?
Need a motion on the floor to discuss.
Do we have a motion for discussion?
For discussion, I move to approve.
Support. More.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We got discussion.
We have discussion.
All those in favor?
Question to our planner, this is, as I understand, is next to a high-rise, correct?
Yes.
And this is only a one-story?
Correct.
The entire project?
Yes.
Was, did they consider any concentration more of a lot of the higher usage of the property?
They didn't express anything to me about that.
I mean, it isn't required, I understand, but it would seem as the, a higher use of the property to have actually made it a higher rise than.
Well, yeah, but then you'd run into the parking issues.
Well, that's true, I suppose, alright.
This is a question for staff, if I heard right, did they abandon the redoing the building?
That was a poor choice of words. They abandoned phase one of the project and moved right into phase two.
Phase two.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, can I speak?
Oh, yes.
So, we actually approved this site review, right?
You approved the phase one, which just included the front building, with the idea that they were gonna come back to you with phase two.
With phase two.
They never completed phase one, they decided to do the whole project, phase one and two at the same time. But, yes, you approved phase one of this project before.
So, I guess my question is, is that protocol to just skip over? Or did they have to come back to us to report phase two?
They have to come back to you for the site plan review for phase two. You issued a special use permit for them to do phase one. This is really more of an extension of the, of the special use permit since phase two was not included in the initial.
My gosh.
You're able, under special use permits, you're able to add conditions if you desire.
Oh, okay, so what they're doing is, is okay, that's what I wanna know.
Yeah, this, but it's another question for staff. What happened to phase one? What did they leapfrog over into two?
It was a financial decision on their part, I would think, to go and do the entire project. Part of which is that where the detention pond is being proposed, they were gonna put in a parking lot there to accommodate the phase one. In this, then, they are removing that parking lot in the front, putting the detention pond in, and then putting all the parking in the back.
So, if I may, so you mentioned the MDOT approval is required, so should the motion include the contingency of approval by MDOT?
You could, but that's really part of the engineering review. They ensure that MDOT's approval, because they have to tie into the sanitary system, and they have to get NDOT approval, however, it's the city's sanitary system, so it's.
Is there anybody I would like to, go ahead.
Hey, Bob, city staff, I've been looking at, do you know how big the units are, square footage of one of the apartments?
Um, I'm trying to remember if they, if they had indicated in there.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
There is.
Yeah.
One of, there's one that indicates something like a one-bedroom, but it does have some dimensions there, I just can't read it.
Well, I mean, you can take the total square footage of 8,000.
It says one-bedroom.
Okay. Whatever that is.
Yep.
And divide it by 13, that'll give you an idea what the units are.
Yeah, it's about 600.
25 or 600 square feet. I guess, I made the motion, I would certainly propose it to be contingent on MDOT approval.
So, is that an amendment on addition?
That would require, that would require a motion to amend.
I'll move to amend, that's okay, that's fine, I'll move to amend to add that contingency.
We're gonna add that on.
Right. Is that what we need to do?
You need a second of vote.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, on the addition?
Aye.
Okay. Well, at this point, we just have to vote on overall correct.
The main motion as amended, yep.
Okay, so we need a motion as amended for J230173.
Just call the vote.
Oh, yeah, we just need to call the vote.
Okay, call, good.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, I think.
Any opposed?
No.
For what? Oh.
Okay, we're gonna go move on to public hearing, proposed ordinance amendment regulating solar energy systems.
I think that's staff round. Yeah, so you've had this ordinance since December, and I have reached out to industry leaders, as well as utilized some of the zoning ordinances, and there was a guidebook that was put out by MSU and collaboration from the U of M for this, the proposed solar energy system zoning ordinance was developed primarily to address the medium and large principal use, solar energy systems like solar farms and solar gardens. We have some property within the city that potentially could accept those kinds of things, that size. It includes a section on decommissioning in, in the event that some of these large-scale solar energy systems are developed and later become obsolete. The decommissioning requirements ensure that the structure will be removed. In addition, it codifies the requirements for some of the structural documentation that's required for the solar panels to be attached to homes, and likewise adds a section regarding solar collector placement within the historic districts. And then I also tried to address the, any new ground-mounted and accessory structure types of solar collectors that may become part of future development.
Again, you're in the public hearing, so you have to get through the public hearing first.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this zoning ordinance amendment? Is there anybody else that wants to speak to the public zoning, proposed zoning ordinance amendment and regulations? Last time. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the proposed zoning ordinance amendment regulations? Hearing none, do we have a motion to go into?
To close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing.
So move more.
So, we have to have a motion for discussion?
You have to vote on the motion to close the public hearing.
Everybody that wants, okay.
Aye.
I mean, I'm not used to not having a number here, I'd like to see a number. So, on C, is anybody, what are the, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, sorry about that, I'm used to seeing a number. So, can we?
And now you need a motion to?
Do we have a motion to go into discussion?
It would be a motion to approve the amendments, a motion to recommend approval to council.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to approve the amendment to council?
Second.
Discussion.
So, this is adding, oh, I'm sorry. So, this is adding language that we never had, you added the language.
Correct.
Right?
Everything in red.
Right. I sort of thought to that, 'cause it was a lot of red. Okay, thank you.
I am generally in support of the, of the proposed ordinance, but I do have a question regarding C, let's see. 153, the application. It seems, and it comes to mind because I've, it would affect me, in fact, if I wanted to do something with my system, 'cause I currently have had a system for over 25 years on my roof. But, there doesn't seem to be anything that either grandfathered something in, or, I mean, the cost of having a structural roof evaluation and fastening sign and stamp by a professional engineer could be prohibitively expensive for a small application. All you want to put in on is a couple, three or four solar panels on an existing dormer. It'd be more expensive to hire the person to do all that than it would be to put the system on. So, is there a reason you haven't considered a smaller, you know, a small-scale operation without all of that requirement?
Well, typically, you can get that documentation from the supplier, they provide that information.
But if a person wanted to do it themselves?
But, again, you, you can get that information from the supplier. Nothing prohibits you from installing these yourself, it just, the building department would like documentation on, on that for the file.
Yeah, I'm talking about a structural roof evaluation wouldn't be done by the, by the supplier of the panels, or?
It potentially could, because if, if you're attaching those to roof rafters that are existing, that typically would be a standard installation.
See, I've already got the brackets there, they're all attached. Alls I would do is remove the old system and put on a new one, and I'm sure there's other people who have similar systems they could just substitute. And, the, the, the system I had is quite, is a lot heavier than any would, any solar current electric system, solar.
So, if you're, if you're swapping them out and replacing them?
I would just replace what I have with something.
Yeah, well, then the, then the structure is there to begin with, so that's not an issue.
But, it doesn't, there's no exception for that, though, it's, you have to provide those, and that's sort of where I'm coming from, there should be some kind of language that accepts existing systems or allows for staff to say you don't need those requirements.
I guess I would have to look into that, get some advice on it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with the ordinance, it's a good idea to have, but there are, I know there's other people who have systems that could be swapped out now, but won't do it because it'd be prohibitively expensive to do some of this stuff.
It just seems as though if you're using the existing brackets and you're just replacing the panels, using the existing wiring, that, that would, that's, that's just replacing what you have.
Yeah, well, it's a place with a different kind of system, though, it's going from a liquid to a, like, what do you call it, solar?
Photovoltaic.
Photovoltaic system, so it is a different system, but it would be a setup on the existing unit.
Well, it's a good question, I'd have to.
I, I, I'm okay for voting for, but with the request that you come back with an answer to how we can address that particular problem in the future, maybe an amendment.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Bob, I have a question. I mean, staff, I have a question. Wouldn't it not be on individual basis when they go to evaluate? I hear what, what Commissioner Clock is saying, so, it's like everything would be different. Because when we talk about grandfathering, we talk about making sure everything is straight. And some grandfathering is two grandfathers too far back to do it, you know, and I'm not trying to be funny.
No, 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 I know what you're saying.
You know, so, it's like, if you grandfathering everybody, I mean, I understand where Commissioner Clock is coming from, and I like the idea, but I think that it should be on an individual basis that you evaluate, because we don't want people to think that, okay, you got the system, you can do this, and your stuff is outdated, 'cause it's still gonna cost you. And I'm not a mechanic, I am not mechanically inclined, period. But, I do know that when it comes to these roofs, 'cause I was looking at it, to getting one, it's a whole lot more than meets the eye. So, I agree with you on that, but, hey, we might need to say each individual, I mean, you know, individual cases.
And I agree with that, too, that's, I, I.
Right.
That's why I was asking that this be looked at with a, grandfather may not even be the right word.
Right.
It may simply be that you need a simpler system or simpler application process for substituting an existing, or substituting for an existing system where you don't have to worry about the load and a lot of the other, where the height and all those requirements have already been met, and it's just a question of, will the system be done right?
Yeah, and, and I think there's, I mean, there's a difference between replacing a system apples to apples and upgrading a system, and, and that, that, that's, might be a conversation to have with our inspectors, because the difference between those two might require pulling different sorts of permits and such.
Well, and I agree, and I was just gonna say, it really boils down to liability, so the inspector's job is to, is to ensure health, safety standards, and it's based upon the building codes. When we get a set of plans, they're either under a general contractor who is the liable party, or they're under a stamped drawing by an architect or an engineer, and the building inspector ensures, tries, makes sure that what was installed falls under one of those individuals who are taking on that risk, that responsibility, and so, that's what it comes down to. So, I think it's legitimate that I go back to the building inspection department and see, maybe how we can reword this.
Or add a, a different, a different provision for the kind of situation we're talking about.
Right.
And it might not need, I mean, you may have the applicant, who might be the owner, do a hand-drawn site plan that gives you, gets you onto the site to see what might be needed.
Yeah, but again, you gotta fall back to the liability, if they provide you with a hand-drawn drawing, it's the homeowner the one responsible for.
Sure, the homeowner's doing the work, they should be responsible.
Yeah.
So, that's what I'm asking that you, you look at.
So, at this point, since, is he supposed to come back with another answer? With city staff, since this is on the table now?
Nobody's made a motion to that effect, no.
Okay. So, do we have a motion that, that C is looked into a little bit further and comes back?
I would ask, I would do that as a motion, yes, and I guess if that means we postpone today's hearing, then I would include that as part of.
The hearing's done.
Yeah, the hearing's.
No, not the hearing, I'm sorry, postpone the, the consideration of the ordinance.
There's no hurry on this, I'm just.
Then, then I, yeah, I'll make the motion, we can, we postpone the consideration of the ordinance with the request staff come back on these issues that we've raised today.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, I have a couple of small corrections. On page five, under section B4, you've got listed R1 twice, and I think one of those should probably be R1A.
Yes.
And then on page eight, uh, page nine, under 12E, where planning commission is crossed off, on either side of that, you've got the word "the," and so, one of those words, "the," needs to come out.
Go back to, okay, so.
Page nine.
Okay, 9E.
For all technical purposes, this should be off the table at this point, so if you just have some typographical stuff that needs to be cleaned up, perhaps you can email that to staff.
Okay.
Right, too.
Thank you. So, with that being said, we can just go to D, right?
Correct.
Okay. Item D is capital improvement plan. This is just information, correct?
Yes, it is. It is informational for our annual capital improvement plan as it gets presented to the planning commission. I'm Jonathan Baker, I'm budget analyst one down in OMB, work for Yolanda, it's good to see you guys again this year. What is the capital improvement plan? Our capital improvement plan is mandated by the GF Way for when we turn in our budget for our award every year. We do a six-year project improvement plan throughout the entire city, general pond, water, sewer, streets, all of it. This will bring projects together, so that if there are similar projects, they can be worked together, like when you do a street, you do water and sewer at the same time, so it's all being done at once instead of going back in peace feeling. Kind of brings everybody together to talk. We also utilize the master plan to try to keep everything in line with where the city's goals are and where we're trying to go. Capital improvements are physical facilities or assets which involve a substantial investment and last a long time. So, this isn't things that are, throw, like desks and, well, desks kind of are, those are longer-term, sorry. What it comes down to is, it's any project exceeding $20,000 is our threshold. So, land, new structures, major repairs to buildings, things of that nature. Motorized vehicles like fire trucks and, like the Vector trucks that the sewer department uses, those are all capital, whereas a pickup truck for streets is not considered capital. The CIP lists its locations, when we're going to do the construction, the cost and how they're going to finance that, whether they're gonna use bonds, loans, existing monies that they've been saving, things of that nature, and then they get prioritized by the department that brings them to us, you as the planning commission, and then the city manager gets a final say in how he prioritizes the capital projects. And this is updated annually. We do this to optimize the use of tag. We do this to optimize the use of taxpayer dollars. We want to be the best stewards of the public's money that we can be. We create transparency by having it all, everything listed out, everything that's been requested and approved. It shows stability because we're planning long-term. We can be prepared for the bigger costs that are coming up in the future. We can also improve our bond rating, which helps water and sewer then do more infrastructure projects or whoever then goes for a bond. The process of CIP begins with department directors. Every year, well, it starts with us. We send out the new updated CIP paperwork that we ask them to review for us and send back all their projects. So these are shown further on, but they just list every project that they want to do for the next six years, which then we compile and we create the capital budget spreadsheet that you guys will get to rate today. We then give it to you guys. And then when you give it back to us, we then present it to the city manager for his approval. The timeline of this was we sent the departments the forms October 24th of last year. They returned them by November 18th, which I then collected and compiled into what is presented to you today. And then I will get the ratings back from you by the 28th of February is when we would need those returned. And this year we have gone all digital, so there will be an Excel spreadsheet emailed to you if it has not already been. And each tab behind the front page is the projects that need to be rated. And there's a score sheet on the front with a drop-down menu where you rank them one through four. This is the form we send to the departments. So they put the project name, the cost, and then their priority there. And then the funding divisions are there so that we know where they want to pull the monies from. We've changed recently the priority ratings so that priority one is imperative, priority two is essential, priority three is important, and priority four is desirable. This allows us to get a better handle on what projects have to be done, what projects should be done, what projects we would like to do, and dream projects. Things we would love to do for the betterment of the city, but they're not included within the three-year funded timeframe. This is how they do split projects. So if there are multiple divisions being included or departments, they show that some monies will come out of the general fund, some will come from a loan, some may come from water, sewer, what have you. And we track all of that back into our spreadsheet. They give the analysis and explanation, how it impacts operations. Those are all provided by the department heads so that you know how the project may impact each department and the public. They also provide a picture of the project typically, the type of project, whether it's a routine replacement, rehabilitation, an efficiency project, or a new project. It allows us to know better whether this needs to be done for new, we have the money already set aside, those types of things. And this is where we're going to get into the planned projects for this year that you will see in the spreadsheet. Most of what you'll find are streets projects. They handle the most public-facing projects. A lot of these are annuals where they do the annual millinery services across, crack ceiling throughout the whole city, doing sidewalk repairs. They're doing a, they're doing Mackinac Street from Congress to Alexander. That's one of the bigger projects that's been ongoing. They're doing Wheeler Street from Michigan to Grashit. That's just about $3 million of project between streets and sewer and water. A lot of these are already in progress, and this is just a continuation of things that have been approved in the past. There are some new projects like the traffic signal upgrade at Alexander Bank Court, Senate Street Bridge preventive maintenance. And Hess Avenue from Owen to Sheridan is in the design state. Water and sewer projects are much more simple. It's lead line, lead service line replacements. Those are ongoing and are going to be until 2050, I believe. That's our deadline for having everything converted from the old galvanized and lead lines to the new copper lines. We also have $1 million a year for line rehabilitate and replace sewer mains and $600,000 a year for water mains. That's just other places where there may be a break or any sort of repair needed. We keep that there. Other projects, a lot of these are out of the general fund that are trying to be done. Every year we do $20,000 worth of tree removal out of cemeteries. They're trying to do the Oakwood sidewalk this year and cemetery road replacements because they're doing, they're looking at doing a lot of cemetery upgrades over the next few years. So they're trying to kind of get everything beautified for the cemeteries. They have the Hoyt Park building renovations and the roads getting to there. Greenpoint Nature Center repairs. There was vandalism two years ago now, I believe. So we've been trying to find the funds to fix the vandalism to bring everything back up to the standards we would like to keep for those buildings. Ojibwe stage, electrical upgrades. We want to continue having events there. We're trying to bring everything up to standard. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Ostas?
Yep. Thanks for the presentation. It's always good to see what we're focusing on. I was kind of wondering when this was going to come, too, because last time was like December. But for the lead line replacement, have we had any opportunities under any of the Congress's bills and acts that would allow some money, maybe even under infrastructure that we, are the grants out there yet that we know of or, because I know there's always a process?
I can answer that question. We, Paul Reinsch and his.
He's got a big grant.
Huh?
Didn't we just get a big grant?
For water talent.
Paul Reinsch and Phil Carwatt has been working on applying for different types of grants and loans. I know that the city manager has talked about it several times, that unfortunately we're actually doing our job right. So sometimes it's hard to receive those funds because they rank us low. So we are applying for these funds. It's just getting them to come in.
So for anybody watching, the scoring low part is because we're doing a good job and there's a scoring system from the state that determines a lot of times who gets the grant. So thank you for that clarification. Yep. One other question is the Ojibwe island that got my attention tonight when you started talking about electrical on the island?
Yeah, it's on the stage where they do the concerts. They want to do the, they want to upgrade the stage and the electrical around there. There's more detail in the packet that you're getting in the email, but this is something they've asked for for multiple years. I think it's trying to bring everything up to a 2022 standard.
Right. Yeah, I've had this conversation with the city manager. He knows this one here is dear to me so we can, if we have an event there, like once we fix the stage, of course, that's another ongoing, that's another project that we're looking into separate from this. But that we wouldn't have to run people on generators, so this will give them the capability. So this is, I'm happy to hear that we're looking at that.
Yep.
Because that missed opportunities when we used to bring 125,000 people to the island for a concert. So, yeah, I'm looking.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering if you could please clarify something in your presentation for me. You said on slide 10 that our due date was February 28th, but then it says in the slide that it's actually due, the ranking projects, by March 24th.
That was a last-minute update into this presentation. It is February 28th.
It is February 28th.
And the reasoning for that is that we're required by charter to have our budget to council last Monday of April. So by the time we get the information to you and meet with the city manager and get the budget balance, you're way into March and April timeframe. So the February date is the ideal day for us to receive that information.
Sure, no problem. And if you could just clarify one more thing because I'm pretty new to this. When we do the ranking on the spreadsheet that you've provided us, do we submit that to you?
Or Bob or Kathy.
You could forward it to me and I could forward it to Jonathan.
Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And it is, I don't think he included the, yeah, he did not. But there is the spreadsheet that will be coming to you and it's all, I highlighted the spaces. I made a drop-down menu for the ranking location. So you can just click it and click one through four based on those things I labeled earlier, the one through these right here, the imperative, essential, important, and desirable to you. That's how we rank them and get them back.
And the reason why we changed it to this, in the past, everything was, if you saw what the departments provided, everything was of number one priority. And so now we're saying all the forward-facing projects as a planning commission because of the Planning Enabling Act, we want you to rank it so that we'll know and be able to communicate that with the manager.
Exactly. We just wanted a more clarified must-do, should-do, could-do, would-do is basically the.
Didn't we do this last year?
Yes.
It is the same rate as last year. I just knew we had new members.
It's like I said, it's required by the Planning Enabling Act, so.
You know, doing this every year?
Every year.
Every year.
Yep.
Every year.
Any other, any other questions from the commission?
I do. On this project sheet, other projects that you're working on.
Which, other projects?
Yes.
Okay.
I see for year 2023, is that just a standard?
That's a typo, but that's this year, fiscal year '24.
Right.
Sorry.
And then in the future, estimated costs is?
The next five years.
The next five years. So this 80 that I'm looking at is over the course of five years, it's going to go up, 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 and get to 80?
Yeah. So say there's five years or six years of planning, the first year's $20,000. And then it's $20,000 a year for four years after that.
Okay, good.
For the tree, for example.
Okay, I just didn't know.
Yep, absolutely. That's why I'm here.
Mr. Ostas, Commissioner Ostas?
Question. So just recently, on January 13th, last council meeting, we appropriated funds for cemetery repair as well. Is that, are those funds separate?
Okay.
That is separate.
Okay, thank you.
The difference is that this is what's going to affect your regular budget. So if this is approved, this is what's going to affect our budget versus the ARPA funds, which is a whole separate pot of money.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. So for the public, we are making a lot of renovations.
And this is what we're trying to do, yes.
Commissioner Clark, do you have a question?
I do. Excuse me, I do. Has this already been set out? Because I don't believe I received this yet.
Yes, I did send that to you on Friday.
I've been through my emails and I don't.
It's an attachment I have.
I'll check again, but I don't.
Is there any way you could resend it to everybody?
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to make sure I get it and connect it because I've been through everything and I haven't seen it, so.
I can also state, I was going to get with you after the meeting, but, yeah, I don't get the email. I just get the paper that comes in the mail, hard packet in the mail, so I don't get the email section either.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So we move on to public comment. I don't think anybody's saying anything from the public, so, okay. Okay, can we move on to old business? Any old business? Commissioner Clark?
I had written about a mistake in the meeting schedule. Has that been corrected?
Yes. You can go on the city's website, too, and you'll see all the schedules for the different boards and commissions, and it would be corrected on there.
Because I didn't get anything back, so.
Yeah, yep.
It was a May 22nd date was on, and that's actually a Monday. And it should be Tuesday, the 23rd, so.
Any other comments on old business from the commissioners? Okay, see none? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sound a little more second.
All in favor?